Ladies and gentlemen, if you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have our chaplain here tonight. Mr. Clerk, would you please pray for us?
Thank you for the day, we thank you for the time you've given us, we thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Hampshire County. I pray that all is said and done, that be to your pleas. I would also ask that you would comfort those who had losses within our courthouse community, suffered a lot lately, and we just pray that you would all near those in loss this morning. In the name of all these things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please be seated. I'll now call the meeting to order. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting, of which the Commission received a digital copy. I've read over those, gentlemen. Unless there's any correction, I'd like to hear a motion to approve those as presented.
I move that we approve those minutes as presented.
Second?
A motion and a second to approve the minutes of our previous meeting as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Moving on to President and Commissioners' reports. I'll try to be brief, even though I'm not good at that. I did meet with Executive Director Malcolm of our Hampshire County EMS, HCSA, Board Member Brent Swisher, our Treasurer of the County, Deputy Director and Captain Carter, who sits on the HCSA as a citizen and also a Captain Deputy in our Sheriff's Office. We just really wanted to get together, talk about the future, the new buildings, the direction of HCSA, talk about financial situation. As the Commission knows, and a lot of the public know, when this fee was originally implemented before I was here, it was intended to supplement the volunteers, the hundred dollar fee. It has gone a lot further than I think anybody ever dreamed it would. I believe it was originally intended for two ambulances, and we also paid Valley Health a chase car ALS unit, paramedic, to supplement the volunteers, and it's expanded to countywide coverage. And it's put a lot of strain, the fee. We've done a good job, as a Commission, in my one opinion, to keep the fee ever since I've been here at a hundred dollars. And costs just keep rising. And, long story short, we're game planning for the future and talking about where we need to cut and things of that nature to keep things sustainable and viable. I also spoke with Mr. Webb, who's here tonight, so I won't elaborate. That, for the public, is pertaining to opioid lawsuit. I did go to the Health Department pre-construction meeting, of which our Podesta, Potesta, rather, engineer was there, and our architect, and also the contractor in Lance Construction. It was about a three-hour meeting, so it all pertained to our negative pressure room and the grant that we got from Charleston Governor Justice. And we signed a motion to proceed. And the Commission has got those details. So our negative pressure room will be commencing this fall. And it'll be about a one-year project. Just for those of you that don't remember, that was a grant from the Governor to, for Mineral County and Hampshire County to upgrade our health departments. Long story short, to help, if there was a major outbreak of some sort, we'd have better facilities and redirect the HVAC system if there was an outbreak for containment in the building, where you wouldn't spread those pathogens throughout the building. So, moving on, I sent the Commissioners, or the, excuse me, the State Auditor sent the full Commission an email on board and commission and authority training for our board members, of which I forwarded to most, all of the department heads. A few gentlemen saw that. If I missed anybody, if you would forward that to them, it's a free training the State Auditor offers to our boards and commission members. Didn't want to mention that Friday, I spoke to the Sheriff and the Tax Assessor. We planned to close the annex until noon on Friday for, so that the employees could see, be present for the funeral for our Deputy Assessor, Matthew Tremble, who passed away. Also attended a PBTA meeting. The main substance of that was planning our award ceremony, financial procedures, and going over our hydrogen project, and also our new garage in Burlington, which is materializing. I did meet with the prosecutor, talked about staff, and the letter that she sent on behalf of the Commission to the Attorney General, which the Commission received. And planning Commission meeting, of which I believe we're going to touch on here in just a bit, but I did want to brief the Commission on the numbers for this past month. Ninety-six hundred dollars in permit fees and three point, 3.02 million in construction, ten additions, forty-six outbuildings, eight residential homes. So, pretty good month. Also, did attend the Hampshire County Development Authority meeting. Main substance of that was, we're working on a deal with Direct Answer to sell another large parcel in the Tech Park, which would almost completely pay off our debt in the Tech Park, get us going in the right direction. And I also met with Delegate Thorne to talk about solar issues. And spoke with the CEO of Aquabank, who is going to reach out to the Commission about tax-exempt bonds. It's about 10.5 million dollars. He plans to make an offer to buy the remaining parcels in the Tech Park to expand on his project that he already has a purchase agreement for with the Development Authority. So it was originally three, three units on Shrimp Farm, and this would expand it. So the reason that project's languished, this funding source came available, and as a company, thought, and with his engineers, he thought it'd be a lot smarter to do the construction all at once. So anyways, he'll be presented to the Commission at a later meeting. Other than that, Commissioner, Commissioner Hott, did you have anything further? Did you have a report today, sir?
Yes, sir. I will go over the, some of the broadband updates. Haven't done that in a while, so I'll just hit the highlights on some of that. These are the projects that the county's partnered with and to increase availability of broadband in Hampshire County, which, you know, we've been working on for several years now. So totaling projects, we have passed fourteen-hundred-and-twenty-four places that, where broadband would be, broadband fiber would be available to now. In Cape and Bridge, 181 homes with about 74 subscribers, about 40 percent take rate there. In the Grassy Lick area, 223 homes passed, 84 subscribers. Community Connect Project, 637 homes passed, 214 subscribers. Under construction from Shanks to Augusta, hoping to pass to 1,060 for availability there. The Cape and Bridge Smokey Hollow project is currently under construction, and the goal there is to go to Water View Estates and Village Drive. Just a second here. The Ford Hill Road, from the intersection of Grassy Lick all the way to Augusta, remote, is complete, open to customers. Update for Route 50, the 50, Route 29 split out to Slainsville. Construction is complete and splicing is almost complete. Two terminals at Hoy Road remaining to be sliced, waiting for water line equipment to get out of the way. Expected to open this area up to customers in September. The Route 50-29 split outside of Augusta to the Liberty Station. That would be strand for cable is up and attached. Sections are buried and are complete and waiting for cable placement. Route 50-29 Liberty Station split at Hanging Rock on to Cooper Mountain. Expected to start construction in October. And top of Cooper Mountain to Cape and Bridge, still need one more right-of-way for those to be secured. We're expecting to continue to make good progress heading into the fall, as long as the weather cooperates. And any questions or more details you'd want on that information, you can contact our broadband director here with the county, Mr. Aaron Cox. And he supplied me with that information, and I thank him for that update. The rest of the stuff I have, Mr. President, I can address during the agenda. I do have one short thing that falls under the general maintenance agenda there. If we could go ahead and address that.
Sure.
We reassigned our board members in the past month. I'm a little bit behind on Parks and Rec there. And I do have a candidate for that, Mr. Drake Keckley. The Parks and Rec Board would like to appoint him as a new member there. And I believe he's with us here this evening, but I would like your all's approval to do that.
You gonna make a motion?
And that is my motion, yes, sir.
Okay, I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Drake Keckley to the Parks and Rec Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Keckley. Look forward to your energy. New minds.
That's all, that's all I have, Commissioner.
Yes, sir, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hott?
The only, only meeting I attended was, I attended the Eastern Community Action Meeting last night, and there was nothing there really to report. The only thing we done, any action items, was we amended our budget, and then we had some training, and that was about it. So I don't have any, anything else to report.
Thank you, sir. We have T.R. Mead, Eastern Regional Family Resource Network, Teen Court presentation, and they may not be present.
She said she wanted to come early to get her equipment set up, so I haven't seen her.
Okay. I did, well, good afternoon, evening.
Is that her?
Are you Ms. Mead?
Yes.
Would you please come forward, Ms. Mead?
They were doing some line work.
Right on time, actually, perfect, perfect timing.
I have some things for you. Three. Absolutely. You're absolutely welcome. I apologize for just showing up.
Oh, you're right on time.
My name is Tiere Mead. I work for Eastern Regional Family Resource Network. We cover Hardy, Grant, Hampshire, and Pendleton Counties. My job title there is Juvenile Remediation Case Manager. I handle courtroom trial competency curriculum for juveniles. And I do that in four circuit court districts, which led to Teen Court. Greg Puckett, our Executive Director with West Virginia Teen Court, reached out to me, and he said, hey, I think you're the perfect person we've been looking for to revitalize Teen Court here in our Potomac Highlands area. So I was like, okay, well, what is Teen Court? I'd never heard of it. And he explained it to me, and he said, it's kind of your wheelhouse, Tiere. It's kind of what you do now. And I said, okay. So he assigned me Grant County first. As of September 1st, Grant County will be one year operational. We've had wonderful success there. Our school board loves it, the court system loves it, probation, the prosecutor's office, magistrate, we all take referrals from all of them. Our police departments are on board with us. So after a year there, it had always been the hopes to expand to other counties. So after Grant County got up and running within three months, he said, Tiere, because I need you to go to Hardy County next. And I said, okay. So Hardy County is in the process of being implemented. Judge Carl will sign their order next Thursday, so that we're there. And then, after he saw this success and the feedback that Hardy County really wanted the program to help with their juvenile justice system, he said, now I want you to go to Grant, to Hampshire, Pendleton, and Mineral Counties. I did not know that Hampshire County previously had a Teen Court. I don't know what happened. I think it's been probably, by our calculations, almost 10 years that it's not been operational. So we put our feelers out there. I met with Hampshire County Board of Education. They've offered their support. Think it could be beneficial to what they already have in place within the school, in their school resource officers. I met with Rebecca and her Assistant Prosecutor there on board. Judge Carl will sign the order for Hampshire County on September 5th, when I meet with him. So we're just here as a courtesy. Hope that you see what a difference we can make with the juveniles within your county. And we are here to ask just for support. There's no funding that needs to be asked. I think that you guys from previous had issued the five-dollar assessment fee on citations and tickets within your county and municipalities that write tickets. Rebecca checked that for me the other day. That is still being collected. There is a sizable amount of money in there. So I think as far as a budget for the Hampshire County Teen Court Program, that's going to be covered. Not only with what Greg will send to me for Hampshire County, but what you've already collected over the past couple of years, 10 years or so. Does everybody, you guys know how, how it works? Have you been familiar with the other program?
Yeah, a little bit, but if you'd like to explain for the public, just briefly?
Sure. So what Teen Court is, is Teen Court is a second chance juvenile justice system. And what it does is that it holds the juvenile offender directly accountable for the crime or citation status offense that they committed. A lot of times what we see is that when a juvenile gets in trouble for status offenses, the parents show up, they pay the ticket, and that's it. The behavior still continues within the school or within the community. The hope with Teen Court is that by making the teen directly accountable for their crime, that they realize that I need to stop this behavior, and we have programs put in place to help them change the behavior. So the way we do it in Grant County, and I'm hoping that every county will kind of operate the same way, is that if the juvenile commits a crime, they're issued a ticket, or a citation, or a petition is written. And the referring agency can be your prosecutor's office, it can be your probation office, your magistrate court. And sometimes the school resource officers contact us directly and say, I have a case, I think this might, this person might be good for Teen Court. I get the referral, I review it, my teen volunteers. What we did in Grant County is that, because not every case can be held or heard in Teen Court, there are some things that, as a parent myself, I don't really want my child exposed to yet, so I kind of tread lightly with what I expose other people's kids to. So we talk about the referrals, and we think, can this family or this juvenile benefit from our program? And if so, then we accept it. I let the referring agency know that they have, we have accepted the case. We meet with the parents, and this has to be agreeable by the parents and the teen. Everybody has to work together. If they refuse to let us hear their case, then it goes right back to the referring agency, and they will have to go through the criminal, juvenile criminal process for whatever the charge is. If they do agree to let us hear it, our kids do case prep. We have mentor attorneys that come in and work with them. I had an exceptional group of kids out of Grant County, and I'm sure there's just as many exceptional ones here in Hampshire County that want to be involved with the law, or maybe see theirself with a future in the law. We do a case prep, we hear their case. If they receive their sentence, if they satisfactorily complete their sentence within six months, the charge is dismissed. It's like it never even happened. If they fail to complete their sentence within the necessary timeline and everything of that verdict, then I violate them, and then they have to go back. Now, I know that Judge Courier and Judge Ryan, and of course, your new Judge Tredway, as of the 1st of the year, have worked closely with our program, and they're kind of on board that this is like a very great opportunity for a teen to have. And if they don't fully succeed in our program or choose to violate and not complete their sentence, that when they do come back to the courts, that they're not going to be as forgiving with them. So the cases that we can hear, juvenile status offenses, we do get a lot of vaping out of Grant County. I think vaping is probably a problem in almost every school. We did hear destruction of property, it was school property. We did hear that, that was our first case in Grant County. But we can hear truancy, curfew violations, incorrigibility, runaway, and of course, the possession or use of alcohol or controlled substance, depending on the quantity. We can also hear delinquency crimes. And delinquency crimes are crimes that if committed by an adult would be a misdemeanor. Now, starting out in Grant County, I did not let them hear delinquency crimes. I just wanted them to get a basis and a feel of what they were capable of doing. And I was shocked by what they did. I think the attorneys that mentored them were shocked, and the judges were shocked as well. But we can hear those, and I will ask that, in Hampshire County, that we kind of hold off on delinquency until the teen volunteers get a good grasp under them. So there's top 10 reasons for creating a Teen Court program in your community. Number one is, Teen Court has shown that it reduces the chance of repeat offenders. I submit data to the state, and then they submit it nationally for me. The last time we checked, I believe it was February of last year. There is a 96 percent success rate. That behaviors are not repeated because of Teen Court, so that's pretty awesome. Typical sentences for Teen Courts, there are mandatory sentences. One is that they have to come back and participate in Teen Court and sit on the jury for at least two terms. They can be sentenced to more, but they at least have to do two. Community service, they have to do at least 60 hours of community service, no more than 40. I don't know how many of you ever go to like regular court or deal with probation a lot, but they tell them, the adults, they say, okay, you have to have community service. Well, what lacks there is that the offenders have to find their community service. I don't know about Hampshire County, but in Hardy County, it's really hard for them. So a lot of them get violated just on the community service part. What we do at Teen Court is that not only do we sentence you, but we also find your community service for you. So it shouldn't be hard to complete, and so far, none of mine have failed at completing their community service. Another mandatory sentence, and this is what makes our Teen Court unique. We're the only one in the state that does it. Greg's checking to see if we are the only one in the nation that does it. But a mandatory sentence for us is that you have to complete a prevention, intervention, diversion, education, or family strengthening program. And we've partnered with Potomac Highlands Guild to offer those programs. We've partnered with On Track to get those programs done. But some of the sentences can, those three things are mandatory. But they can issue an apology, you may have to pay restitution if there's a victim to your crime or damage of property. We capped it in Grant County at 750. My kids kind of thought, if you're 16 years old and you have a job, 750 is adequate to pay over six months. Some counties do like a thousand dollars. I've seen 1,500 before. My kids didn't think that was realistic to do. Like, they really see the program for what it is, and they want to hold their peers accountable. So some of the programs that the Guild offers, and we try, with the programming in partnership with the Guild, is that we try to find a program as closely related to the offense that they are charged with. Vaping, there's Catch My Breath, Live Oaks is for smoking, vaping, where you see the addiction has already started. And believe it or not, I had one, he was 14, and really, he was addicted to nicotine. So we got him into Live Oaks. Like the truancy, we put tutoring in place, we put after-school programs in place for them through the Guild. But there's a lot. Like, there's gambling, we haven't had any gambling. Sexting, we haven't had any sexting, but it is a big problem. I tell all my teens, I don't know, many of them don't know it, until they come to Teen Court, that sexting is illegal in the state of West Virginia. They don't realize that when they take a picture of theirself in a bathing suit and think, oh, I'm going to send it to my boyfriend, that what they've done is they've just distributed child pornography, depending on the nature of the picture. And what he's done is that he's just received it. Like, that's a chargeable offense in the state of West Virginia for juveniles. So as much as we want to help them, we're also trying to educate them too. Your teen jurors, bailiffs, and attorneys, they can be age 11 to 18, if you're still in high school, grade seven through 12. They have to be in satisfactory academic standing with their school. They have to respect the oath of confidentiality. They have to demonstrate maturity, respect, and reliability. You can be recommended by a school official to participate with us. Most of the kids that I talk to already have an interest, so they just come to me directly and say, hey, I'd like to do Teen Court. And I do my own little vetting process through their teachers and their schools to see if you think this person would be good with Teen Court. A lot of people think that, that we're just an after-school program. We are not. We actually work for the circuit courts in the state of West Virginia. Our verdicts are just as upstanding as what you're going to get if you face Judge Carl, Judge Williams, Judge Tredway.
Is that where you get your funding, where you get your funding from?
The funding comes from your citizens. What happens is, is that in 2010, legislature passed a law that any county that has a Teen Court program in any municipality within that county, you can charge a five-dollar fee on to the ticket, citation, or court fees that they have to pay. And all that money is collected, and whatever's collected in whatever county stays within that county, and it has to be used on the Teen Court program or the Teen Court kids. We find a lot of times, like, I've had volunteers that they want to be the attorney, and I'm like, okay. And then they're like, well, I don't have a suit, or I don't have a tie. So we use those funds to get them what they need. The offenders, same thing. We use funds if they need a shirt, or a tie, or a pair of shoes to appear in court. We use that for them. We use it for snacks, to feed them. We've taken trips. I took the Grant County kids, we went to Berkeley County twice, so they could sit in on their case night, and they really liked that, so.
And as far as, as your salary, who pays you? The circuit courts, they pay you?
No, I'm, I work under a grant.
Okay.
Yeah, I work under a grant through the state. Mm-hmm. Yep, my, my position is grant-funded.
Okay.
Yep, I take no funds from Teen Court.
So you mainly request a, a letter from the Commission in support?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have you, you say you've cleared this with Judge Carl and the magistrates and?
Yeah, no, I haven't met with your magistrates yet.
And Prosecutor Miller and their?
Yes, mhm.
And if, when you do, when you have Teen Court, is it, it will be where?
Usually we do it, I guess, we won't do it in this courtroom. We'll do it in the municipal or the or the judicial building down the street, yeah. And in Grant County, we only meet, I train the kids during their classroom time. I got lucky because the VOTAC in Petersburg has a law on public safety class, most of those kids were also involved in AP Gov, so they kind of had a background and a knowledge of court proceedings and the law.
So, you've cleared that with, as far as coordinating?
Yes.
Where you're going to have it, okay?
Yeah, mhm. And we, like I said, we train them, we try to train during classroom time, just because some kids don't have transportation to come after school, but when we do case prep nights, we do those after school because it gets lengthy. And when our mentors come in, they come in usually after school.
You know, you, I don't know how long it's been, I don't think it's been 10 years, but it could have been, but I, I'm not sure how successful it was then, as, from what I hear from you, it's, you know, I think it, I think it might be a good, and back then, I'm not sure it was, was as successful as far as teen court goes.
Yeah, like, when Greg asked me to do this in Grant County, and then said, okay, this county next, this county next, I had asked somebody, I don't know who, somebody had brought it up to me, well, you know Hampshire County had that, and I was like, no, I didn't know, had no clue.
From what I hear, it sounds, I'm, I feel fairly good about it, as from what you have explained.
Well, I can tell you this...
At least I feel that you're, you're very enthused about it.
Oh, yeah, it's my passion. Like, it used to be like trial competency curriculum, like I'd love to educate juveniles and even adults about the law, and then when this fell in my lap, I was like, oh, like, yeah, it's my baby. It's my baby.
A good leader makes a lot of difference.
I have a wonderful support staff, Serena Redmond, she works for the Guild, she is their family service coordinator, she helps us. Rebecca Markwood, she's a new employee there, she's a diver, excuse me, diversion program specialist, with an emphasis in juvenile law, so she'll be helping us this year too, as well.
Do you want a motion for us to do it?
Yeah. Do you have anything to comment, sir?
No, sir. I would move that we show a letter of support for this program, as I think that's all we need to do, because the rest of it's been taken care of through the support system.
Judicial, I have a motion and a second for the county commission to write a letter of support and reestablish teen court in Hampshire County, West Virginia. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you so much. Listen, come visit us, come see what your teens are capable of in Hampshire County.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Hope you succeed.
Just made life a little easier for me.
Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're a little bit over here, commissioners, we have Mr. Webb regarding opioid settlement Mr. Webb, would you please come forward, sir? How you doing?
I'm fine.
Long trip?
Long trip.
No, it's never long when you come to Hampshire County, it's beautiful up here.
We know that.
Oh, I know it, you know it, I know it. Are we going to... You request a...
Do I request executive session? You can, I move, and what are we, we're going in to discuss a lawsuit, basically?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Mr. President, I move we go into executive session.
Second. I have a motion and a second that the commission go into executive session, reason being legal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
No, if I may, when you come out. We have action taken.
Yeah.
Come out. Out.
We live, sir?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome back. We've come out of executive session. No motions were made, no decisions or anything of the sort during the executive session. We have Planning Commission regarding subdivision ordinance and amendments. We have board member Glenn Delaplane, Hunter Thorne, and Mr. Ronkin, President of the Planning. Would you please come forward with your board members? Commission members, rather. Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
What you have in your packet tonight, gentlemen, is the proposed amendments as voted on last Thursday night. This piece right here is basically allows any citizen to look at the proposed amendments without having to go through the second document you have, which is the entire subdivision and land development ordinance that also has the changes. And the last item I have for you up there is a proposed notice of public hearing, which you will need to do according to our law firm. And it will be basically the same rules as we had to follow. You'll have to give at least 30 days. You can tie it in with a regular meeting. The summary of changes that I have on this are updated to reflect the proposed amendments. So it's just a matter of figuring out for you at whatever point, what day you'd like that hearing, and then be able to get this to the newspaper. The legal firm has also recommended that we try to get this document online so county citizens can see it again, and also to try to get it outside of just the county clerk or county clerk's office, and conceivably maybe like the library in Cape and Bridge. Just again to give citizens more of an opportunity to see these. And I think we're more than willing to help out if that's what you gentlemen would like to do. And with that, I have nothing further, subject to your questions.
Yeah, I'd like to see you guys post this at the both of our public libraries for a hard copy for citizens to look over and put it online. Commissioners agree?
Yes.
Yeah, it should be, yeah, anywhere we can put it, it'll be fine.
Okay. So.
I'll get with it.
I've read over this at length, but I believe we need to give the full commission some time to really digest this and come together and see what they think, if anything, or additions, subtractions, or whatever that may be. And then from that point forward, maybe schedule another public hearing. But that's also up to you gentlemen as well. I would like to point out the massive amount of work that you gentlemen did. I mean, probably 150 hours of research and phone calls and meetings with attorneys and engineers. And I can say as one commissioner, I appreciate it. I do remember there was a very, very hard push from a lot of individuals to be hasty because it was such an unprecedented and in their minds dangerous thing. And I understand that, but I believe we took as long as it took to do it right. And now I hear from other individuals that we, they're starting to agree with us that we need to take proper amount of time and as long as it takes to make the right decision. And I will say that the code that was presented to the Planning Commission is a code that pertains to the county commission, not to the Planning Commission. Adding you guys to the process just further adds more democracy, in my opinion, to this process. It's not something that we had to do as a commission. We could have made this decision. The 30-day notice applies to us, not the Planning Commission. But that commission represents, you know, multiple districts across the entire county. And I think we've gone about it the best way that we can. We even went as far as to do surveys and, you know, multiple events. So I really appreciate the hard work and dedication to try to inform us the best you can for a decision we may have to make. So thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
So you want to wait till another meeting to do this?
That's up to you, gentlemen. I mean, I've read it.
I've read over this.
Okay.
Have you?
I mean, we could schedule the hearing now, gentlemen, from 30 days from today, or we could digest it and schedule.
I've read it over, and I attended your Planning Commission meeting the other night. I would say that we could go ahead and start scheduling the next hearing. I definitely want to do that. I want to hear from the public again, straight to the commission. So... But I don't see reason for... To extend the time period anymore unless you guys see a reason for that.
Yeah, I would, I agree with you. I mean, if we go ahead and put it in the paper as an ad and that's ample time for everybody to look at it, and we may have the hearing. If there's anything that we feel that... Because we're the awful ones that are going to make the decision. And if we feel that we've, that we've, somebody would present something that would cause us to go back and look at it again, then we don't have to pass it then. We can say, "We're going to look at this thing again." But I move that we go ahead and advertise, as the code allows. And is it from the time we put the ad?
I don't know.
We put the ad in the paper, though.
Commissioner Hott, the answer is from our legal firm is it needs to be 30 days from the time of the start of the advertisement.
Advertisement, okay.
So we can't get it in this week.
No.
Well, looking at the calendar, I was thinking those things. The first publication of it would be, need to be at the review on Tuesday, the 3rd. So published on the 4th, therefore your next meeting that would accommodate those timelines would be the second Tuesday in October, October 8th. That would work out. Does it just need one, last one advertisement?
Last one advertisement.
I have a motion on the floor to advertise the recommendation of the Planning Commission for amendments to our subdivision land development ordinance. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion as second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passed. Thank you, gentlemen. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Delaplane or Mr. Thorne?
I do not.
Not really.
Thanks, thank you for all your work and research. We have our Historic Landmarks Commission representation here. The Chair, President, and Board Member Shaw, would you please come forward regarding the cemetery survey grant? We're behind, and I'm sorry about that, a little bit. Thank you.
I think you've all received a copy of that. Eugene and I are here on behalf of the Historic Landmarks Commission because we have reached a point where our cemetery survey has a requirement to pay the first two-thirds of the payment to the consultant. They have done their fieldwork and they have done their data and sent it into SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, and they are going through it right now. So the attached email shows that they were, they have given their go-ahead to have the first two payments, the first two-thirds, be paid to Aurora Research Associates LLC.
And we agreed to 10% match, if I remember correctly?
They're going to do 40%, and we're going to do 60%, but we have to pay the entire amount first. And then after it's totally done and they approve it, they'll give you.
Okay, yeah, I apologize. And are you all using any money out of your budget, or was this a?
Okay, thank you.
It's been a while. It's been, we've been busy, I'm sorry.
You're too young to forget. I'm the one that should be forgetting. I do forget, too.
No, we have not used any money out of our budget. We're just all volunteering our.
I remember the motion now. I believe we've already moved on this.
Yeah, we have.
I'm sorry, yeah, I remember now.
It's just a matter of authorizing the payment.
Okay. Sir?
Yeah, I move that we authorize the payment as presented from the Historic Landmarks Committee.
Second.
A motion and a second to authorize a payment as presented by the Historic Landmarks Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
A lot of families are going to be happy about this survey.
Yes, good job.
Excellent job.
And Courtney Zimmerman has done a marvelous job, yeah, so.
Good history, thank you.
We've been very active with them, too, so that's been good because never before have any of them wanted any of our input, so, you know.
Ms. Shaw, while you're here, would you? Would you agree to another term on the Historic Landmarks Commission for the commissioners? You can step down at any time.
So that I can step down anytime, after we finish all this? Yes, I do.
Commissioners, do I hear a motion to reappoint Mrs. Shaw and Mr. Bales to the Historic Landmarks Commission for another term?
I move that we appoint Carol Shaw and Steve Bales to the Historic Landmark Commission for another term.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed, aye, motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I have a Hampshire County citizen here, America J. Burris. Would you please come forward? I'm going to address this under Court Respondents and Requests. We won't be able to make any motions, but we'd like to hear what you have to say regarding suicide awareness and your current event.
I lost my son to suicide seven years ago. There are several families in this community that have lost their children to suicide. I am doing an event the 28th of September at the building across from Sheeps. We're going to have a table with all kinds of resources. I have reached out to another woman, actually she reached out to me from Berkeley County. She lost her son to suicide, and she, she came up with the sources of life in the school systems in Berkeley, Morgan, all in there. For four months, I fought to get ahold of the Board of Education, and it was passed this past year into our school system. We need more resources. We need better help with our children, especially in the middle and high schools. The day after I lost my son to suicide, another boy got hold of a teacher and said, "Hey, I was thinking about this. There is an epidemic in this county, in, well, everywhere, but something needs to be done to help these children to understand the feelings that sources of life does this. I shouldn't have had to fight for four months to get it into our county, but I did because I want these kids to know that they have help, that there is something out there that can give them the resources they need. We need to step up and do better for our children. We, the ones that I've had, through the past years, I've had four or five people stop. I'm holding up signs, we're doing walks. There's no, no support for them. And that's sad because there's a lot of kids that are hurting and need help and have nowhere to actually reach out to get help. My daughter has mental health issues. There's so many in the system that do, and there's nothing done about it. We need better resources, we need more help. I don't know what route to go down now because I've tried every route and I get stonewalled. So I can't go into the school system and say, "Hey, I want to help you with this." My daughter tried that, and when others come up to say, "Hey, this is going on in my life," the principal dismissed that child and said, "You need to just go back to your classroom."
What event are you holding?
It is, I'm going to have a table set up for mental health and suicide awareness. There's going to be brochures, there's going to be other resources to be handed out. I have two other online that are helping me that are in the system that's for therapy and stuff like that.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing in your information and telling us about your event. We can't make any legal motions today or anything, but the only thing that I would suggest is maybe you could reach out to our Board of Health and see if they have some resources or directions they can guide you in for more information. You know, and we have Mental Health Awareness Month, the commission.
It's next month, that's why I'd like to do it this month, in September.
Yes, ma'am, yeah, and I believe they're going to use the courthouse steps for...
Yeah, there's a vigil.
There's going to be a vigil.
I can't remember what it is, but you guys gave permission.
So maybe I could, I could help get you, get you in contact with that group, and you guys can combine resources.
I'll give you my email. You can send me an email for it.
If you would contact me, ma'am, we'll make sure that happens.
I sure will.
So, yeah, that's good you came in. We'll get you in contact with them, and maybe we can work with you in the future.
It's just disheartening that I don't get anybody coming to get the resources. And then I have all this, I have two boxes of stuff at my house right now from the past ones that I've had because I have nobody stopping to even think about it.
Well.
So that's why I wanted to bring it up to you because something needs done in this county especially. I am one of four families that I know of that have lost a child to suicide, and mainly it is the male population because of the stigma of getting help.
Yeah.
So something needs to be done to help these kids. That's why I fight, that's why I do the T-shirts, that's why I do the, I said, I take my time. That's why I do the, the, I said, I take my time out of work to set up stuff to help kids. I reach out to the customers when, at Sheets. If you need any help, let me know. I know you're going through something. Let me know.
Let me, let me say this. If, if you could also get in touch with either Mr. Hill, Rick Hillman or Darren Thorne, did you, did you guys see that email where the, the legislations are, 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 they're looking at, what they're looking at is for, for first responders have to handle mental health.
Yeah.
So...
That's another thing. They don't understand.
So, what I'm saying is, if you could get ahold of both of those guys and, and talk to them.
Make that happen.
Yeah.
I will get ahold of you. I will email you.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
And then also, our Director of EMS is currently working with some funding that we received. The state is starting to attack the problem, and our organization is gonna start...
I'd love to be in that.
A program where our, our dispatchers and EMS have a, have a mental health program. So, we're, but it's people like you that have the bravery to step up and talk about it. You know, this is being streamed live, so hopefully you've touched somebody.
How are people gonna get help if they don't know where to go? I'm very good friends with Donna Stewart. She has, she has helped me with my daughter for years, and I've spoken with her several times, but people do not understand the level of mental health issues in the community.
Yeah.
I, I listened to the woman talk about what she was doing for the drug court. How about seeing what's led that child to do that? How about looking into that child and what's going on in their home? How much abuse there, there, that is in their homes? It's, it, every word that you say to a child sticks. I was in an abusive marriage for twenty-five years. I know what it's like, and I hope you know what it's like. Those words don't go away. They manifest. We need more help for these children. I don't want another parent to have to bury their child.
Okay. Thank you.
That is why I stand up, and that's why I get the information out.
Thank you.
I appreciate you letting me come in today.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming in, and I'm sorry for the loss of your son.
I appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Talk to you soon. Mr. Clerk?
Clerk.
End voices?
Well, we've got several things.
Okay.
If, if we could, Mr. President, I got a, another short item under the maintenance.
Yes, sir.
Not to interrupt the clerk there, but just so I don't, as you know, I'm the, the commissioner that works with this, our local CVB, our county CVB. Last meeting, if you recall, they had tried to get estimates or proposals from engineering firms for the trails plan, and, and this is under ARP Recovery Plan, under the maintenance items of our agenda, just to, for clarification there. But anyway, twice we've, we've went through the required motions to, to attempt something there. We're coming down to the end of the year with those funds. That's, that's one project that hasn't moved any funds. I contacted CVB, explained that to them, also explained, you know, that at least I, as one commissioner, had concerns that, you know, the prices to do that, going through engineering firms and so on, was high, as we saw before, and that I felt, you know, some of that could probably be done in-house. We got some smart guys that work for us, and what I proposed was that they put that money back into the ARP pot, and we reallocate that to the roof of the old Capebridge School, as we know, is a major project that we need to complete. They had called a special meeting, and they all voted that they would be in favor of that, and that they felt that the Capebridge Community Building down there, the old school as we know it, that they felt that was a, a viable plan and an important thing as well. So, I wanted to bring that to the commission, that CVB has put their, their trail plan on hold there with some help from us possibly. We talked about a, a, a subcommittee between CVB, the Development Authority, and Mr. Cox on, on doing some trails in our county, but doing it, maybe doing it on our own first before we go into the expenses of, of engineers and so forth, and we might surprise ourselves with what we could get done because trails are a, a popular thing, and I know at least my constituents ask me about it from time to time. So, anyway, gentlemen, that's sixty thousand dollars for trails. CVB would agree and would like to help fund the restoration of the roof at the old Capebridge Building.
Thank you for doing that work, Commissioner, and thank you to the CVB. I, I think that that's a, we've all learned what a useful building that is to the community in Capebridge, and I really appreciate the CVB taking a look at that and seeing how important that building is to that community and choosing to reallocate those funds, and thank you for doing that legwork because that's gonna be an expensive project. Yes, could I hear a motion to reallocate those funds?
Yes, Commissioner. I'd move that we reallocate the sixty thousand dollars in our ARP schedule slated for trails, and we move that to the roof restoration at the Capebridge Old Junior High or Capebridge Community Building.
And I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to reallocate the ARP funds in the tune of sixty thousand dollars that, and reallocate that to the Capebridge Community Complex roof. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
Okay.
Do you have anything else there for us, Eric?
Um, you're aware of the Hazard Mitigation Plan that Region Eight puts together? They have gone through the process, and they are asking that the commission now adopt the resolution, adopting the update and Hazard Mitigation Plan that they've developed. It's been on the shelf downstairs, available through the period. It's, it's ready.
You've seen this?
Yeah. Mr. President, I move that we authorize you to sign that, that resolution for the Hazard Mitigation Plan for Region Eight.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion on the floor and a second to authorize the President to sign the resolution adopting the Region Eight Planning and Development Council Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
Mr. President, I move we authorize the President to sign the, the pledge agreement with FNV Bank, the deposits that we have in their, in their bank.
Second.
A motion and a second to authorize the President to sign the pledge agreement with FNV Bank. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passed.
Sheriff sent a personnel letter, and the 911队长 sent a personnel letter, so.
Say you got different things.
To the Hampshire County Commission from the Sheriff Nathan Sines regarding Samantha Smith returned to full-time status. He's requesting her monthly, monthly salary be three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. Also, the sheriff has a request for full-time 911 dispatcher Matthew Satterfield. He wishes to be, for him to begin full-time employment as a 911 dispatcher effective next month, September eighteenth, and requesting salary at three thousand, eighty dollars. His monthly salary. Excuse me.
Will you read this one to me?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. President, I move we approve the request from the sheriff on Samantha Smith as a return to full-time status.
Second.
A motion and a second to authorize the document as presented by the sheriff for Samantha Smith returned to full-time status. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
Mr. President, I move that the memorandum requesting final approval for Matthew Satterfield to begin employment as full-time 911 dispatcher.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
All right. We have the sheriff settlement for here in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. All it needs is your approval in a minute.
You know, just talking about the Development Authority, you remember September when we gave them, we authorized two hundred and fifty thousand? But then that's what we don't know now. I gotta continue understanding that now.
That, that was the, the brownfield.
Yeah.
That Rebecca had said you told them.
Yes, I did. So, we took care of that, too. I mean, I think she paid that in January sometime. It'll be, I think. So, now what's the...
It's about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars over the next ten years. It's a, it's a brownfield, CEP loan. It's about twelve hundred dollars a lot. And, and they said that when you were on that board, that you said you didn't want them to take on any more burden, yada, yada.
I thought that's what the two fifty, maybe I, I thought that's what the name of two fifty was.
I mean, that...
I'll have to go to that, because I forgot about that.
Okay.
I have to go to that, us paying the two, agreeing to pay the two fifty.
Yeah, we did. I think it's been paid in full.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Which...
There's exonerations, he was looking at.
Did you get that email about the Development Authority wanting to come in? That's a brownfields. We gave them the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so.
But I did, I mean, I, I did say that at the meetings over there, and that's, when they heard about that, my attention, I thought, hell, we've already paid the two, two fifty. I wasn't sure about, but I'll, I'll have to look at that and see.
I mean, that's a good point. It is.
Because I thought when we done that in September, that we was done.
You have that, a hundred and sixty-some thousand for a roof, you know, fifty thousand for the tech park lot, you have.
You was, you was here when we done that, they had made the roof, weren't you?
Yeah. Yeah. The, the roof here in the industrial park?
Did we pay that?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Mr. President, I move that we approve the sheriff settlement for period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the sheriff settlement as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Those exonerations are mostly, a lot of them are cleric warriors.
Yeah, they're all.
Damn, Dave, that's, that'd be two fifty, a hundred and sixty, thirty fifty. That's a little four hundred thousand there, huh? I'll have to look at it because I don't know anything, I can't remember this about the, the settlement. When did they say it was worth the more, more funding for the...
It's the first payment. The fir, first payment's due in September. So, they, they wanted to come in and hold you two years.
Well, I didn't want to tell them. I did tell them, but there, there's nothing in writing that I told them about it. But, Mr. President, I move the exonerations be approved as presented.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second to approve the exonerations as presented by the tax assessor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
So, gentlemen, at the last meeting, you might recall, we were talking about election equipment, and we have been awarded a grant to cover a significant amount of cost, but you tabled it at that point, and I've done further work and head scratching and wanted to bring it back and talk to you about it again.
So, in a future round, we won't fare as well.
Do you have any comment, sir?
Commissioner Agniter? No, I know we are working with a tight budget, but I do agree with Commissioner Hott that we're not going to get that kind of financial opportunity again for this particular equipment, I would venture to say. And clerk has offered a large portion of that remainder to replace. But again, I guess it comes down to how bad we think we will need this equipment moving on to the future and whether it'll eventually be something we almost have to have or... So, I guess that would be the hinging factor with me is, is on, go ahead and invest in the equipment now.
Counties that have scanners in the precincts have the results published by nine o'clock.
Do I hear a motion, gentlemen?
Well, Mr. President, I move that we bring this back to the table first.
Yeah, I'll second that because we tabled it at the last meeting.
A motion and a second to bring the item back to the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Gentlemen, I'll move that we work with the clerk to purchase the equipment that's presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same side. Aye. Motion passed, two to one.
Thank you. Do you have a settlement agreed to for signature?
Need authorization to sign. That's his grant. I don't know if we need a second motion, but.
I can't stop here but looking.
Now, I'm fine with it.
You fine with this, sir?
Yes. I was going to ask if you wanted to move on that.
Mr. President, I move that we authorize the President to sign a contingent fee contract with Web Law Center, PLLC.
Second.
A motion and a second to authorize the President to sign the contingent fee contract with Web Law Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passed.
Those exonerations are mostly a lot of my clerk requires.
Yeah, they're all.
Damn, Dave, that would be 250, 160. That's a little 400,000 there, huh? I'll have to find out because I don't know anything. I can't remember this about down this time. When did they say it was for more funding for the?
It's the first payment. The first payment's due in September. So, they wanted to come in and hold you two years.
Well, I knew what I told them. I did tell them that. There's nothing in writing that I talked about. But, Mr. President, I move the exonerations be approved as presented.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second to approve the budget revision as presented by the tax assessor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passed.
Gentlemen, at the last meeting, you might recall, we were talking about election equipment. And we have been awarded a grant to cover significant amount of cost. But you tabled it at that point, and I've done further work and head scratching and wanted to bring it back and talk to you about it again. I got official approval on that. The total funding request, the total funding, total cost of equipment was $294,978. Grant funding would come to $187,556, leaving a cost to the commission of $107,000 and a couple odd dollars, $422. The, this would put scanners in each of our precincts. The ballots would be counted as they're cast and would also allow for electronic poll books in each precinct, preventing the problem of potentially a poll worker allowing a voter to vote the wrong party ballot in a primary. Streamline our provisional process significantly. They would be good equipment all the way around. Again, realizing there are other needs that have come up and costs that have happened. I did a little bit of digging around in my budget. You all approved two funds be established for the record room coming from proceeds of recordings that happened. Over the fiscal year of 2023, 24, those two funds ended up with about 14,000 apiece in them. One of them is called Election Fund. The other is the E-Recording Fund. And we were told when that was established, the clerks were told that we could use it for anything we wanted to. During this year, and this is a one-year-only deal, what somehow the legislature allocated a significant bump in that funding, which will then go into the General Fund next year. But this year, I can project that those funds are going to end up somewhere above $40,000 just in this year's income. So, I'm not going to promise you I can pay you the whole $107,000 by the end of the year, but I can significantly stand some of that cost with you if it's needed. So, I just make that offer. I know that I can put 60,000 toward it should that be needed, easily. I would like to protect as much of that E-Recording Fund as I can because we're going to be having to move into that as well in the not-too-distant future. But it would be a resource that we have.
When would we need this money, Mr. Clerk?
Well, we have to pay for it right away, and then the reimbursement of the $187,000 will come back November. The balance, like I said, I'm building as the year goes along. So, that's not immediately available, but would be by year-end.
Where are we going to get the initial payment, I mean, to send out? Have we got funding to do that with now?
It would be in the General Fund, yes.
Is there nothing in the General Fund to do that with?
Yes.
Okay. And then we'd be reimbursed in November of $187,000?
Before the year-end, yes.
Yeah. And then you would also try to work that down by the end of the fiscal?
This weird.
Well, of course, we're going to have to remove this one, you know, put this back on the table. Somebody put it on the table, I think. But I don't think, guys, that you'll have this opportunity again. I mean, that's $187,000. I don't think we're going to.
It won't come back.
But that's my opinion.
The concern that's, the reason we got well-funded on this time around, few counties applied. But there are several big counties out there that haven't moved to the new equipment yet, still on ipodtronic's, Marion being one. Whenever they come up, they're going to take a lot of money. So, in a future round, we won't fare as well.
Do you have any comment, sir? Commissioner Agniter?
No, I know we are working with a tight budget, but I do agree with Commissioner Hott that we're not going to get that kind of financial opportunity again for this particular equipment, I would venture to say. And clerk has offered a large portion of that remainder to replace. But again, I guess it comes down to how bad we think we will need this equipment moving on to the future and whether it'll eventually be something we almost have to have or... So, I guess that would be the hinging factor with me is, is on, go ahead and invest in the equipment now.
Counties that have scanners in the precincts have the results published by nine o'clock.
Do I hear a motion, gentlemen?
Well, Mr. President, I move that we bring this back to the table first.
Yeah, I'll second that because we tabled it at the last meeting.
A motion and a second to bring the item back to the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Gentlemen, I'll move that we work with the clerk to purchase the equipment that's presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same side. Aye. Motion passed, two to one.
All right, thank you. Do you have a settlement agreed to for signature?
Need an authorization to sign. That's his grant. I don't know if we need a second motion, but.
I think to do it. Two lists of states.
I can't stop here but looking.
I just wanted to explain. Now, I'm fine with it.
You fine with this, sir?
Yes. I was going to ask if you wanted to move on that.
Mr. President, I move that we authorize the President to sign a contingent fee contract with Webb Law Center, PLLC.
Second.
A motion and a second to authorize the President to sign the contingent fee contract with Webb Law Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passed.
Where's the statement at? I normally read. I don't see it on.
Where you looking?
The statement I normally read for that. I want to browse that. Okay. Okay. Mr. President, I move the commission approve all probate orders, fiduciary appointments and qualifications, and all fiduciary bonds coming before the clerk and the vacation of the commission since its last regular meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passed.
And I have a special budget provision, number two of this. General Fund, small.
Did you see this? Did you see this?
From Bethany?
Yeah, I think this would be the best way to go.
Yeah. Yeah. We can do this under correspondence and request.
Would, that, can we do that on invoices or what?
You can do it on invoices. She is wanting to have the attention drawn to it and know that it's there.
Okay.
I see you recommend a third option.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, that's less complicated, huh? Mr. President, I move we approve the budget revision number two for the fiscal year 24, 25.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the budget revision as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passed. Need me to sign that, Eric?
No.
Okay.
We'll do that with the invoices. We're going to do the invoices.
Any further business, Eric, other than invoices?
We have the invoices and now I have some things that you can sign 12, and that will be region eight. Might as well just run that by you. She sent that to me quarter after four today.
Gentlemen, the only reason I didn't sign this is because there was a typograph on the, if they go any days over their allotted amount, they have to pay us $750 a day. And they had it written in numerics as 750, and they had it written in wordage as 500. And I didn't think I would be authorized to make any changes. You only authorized me to sign the contract. So, they updated the wording, and I believe it's correct now. The correct amount was $750 for every day they go over. So, if you're okay with me signing that, hear a motion?
I move that we sign the document with the region eight in regards to the negative pressure building with the attention to the changes that President Cannon has noted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the President to sign the document as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passed. Supposed to start September.
About turn time, isn't it?
And they claim it to be about 365 days. This is the breakdown. You can have that if you want.
That's one thing we sometimes we don't worry. Everything we have there. Yeah, I don't need that.
This is the breakdown of their construction over 12 months. Now, this would obviously be September. So, they have 365 days, and there's, they get an additional allotment of, I believe, 35 days for unforeseen or anyways, moving on. Invoices, gentlemen?
I've read the invoices.
Yeah, I read them when we got here.
Ready for motion?
I move to approve the invoices as presented.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the invoices as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passed.
We want to include that in invoices, right?
With the invoices.
Okay.
Your agreement, that's fine.
I move we adjourn, Mr. President.
Second.
A motion and a second that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.